We're now ready to resume the hearing in the case of Rosendale Borough Council against Hurstwood Properties. And I turn now to this Robin Matthew, Queen's Council for the local authorities. Mr. Matthew.
Thank you, my lord. Lord, if I may just take a short period, not more than five minutes, in reply to my learned friend's points on Ramsey. Lord, on the GAA issue, which was given some prominence in his submissions, Lord, GAA does not in any way affect the other principles or doctrines of avoidance being applicable in any circumstances. And therefore, it stands perfectly happily beside the parliamentary intervention on that point. Lord, secondly, my learned friend talked about status and transaction as being matters which required some sort of special relationship with Ramsey. But that misinterprets in my submission Ramsey, which is a principle which is applied in reflection of activities while examining the facts in the appropriate fashion against the statute. And, Lord, in that respect, I would submit what was said by Lord Millet in the Aratine case about how Ramsey should be seen to develop a paragraph 124 of his judgment in that case, which has been in session. That's electronic file page 611. And, Lord, we have set it out at paragraph 10 of our conclusions on page 42 of our submissions. And what he says is that what Lord Brightman said in Furness and Dawson, which he repeats at paragraph 123, this is sometimes taken as being an exhaustive formulation of the Ramsey principle, but it is merely one example of a variety of processes of reasoning which may be involved in its application. In the next passage of his speech, Lord, Brightman summarized the circumstances in which the Ramsey approach was appropriate. And he then goes on and looks at Lord Burma in, sorry, Lord Diplock in Burma. What I'm saying is there is that flexibility, but the fundamental elements have to be present. And those fundamental elements are not trying to derive from the statute whether or not it's a transaction or whether or not it's the status of the taxpayer or individual involved or person involved. It is a matter of an application of principle or doctrine, nothing more and nothing less. And, Lord, you have our submissions on the construction of owner in that provision as well as our submissions on whether it is appropriate in paragraph 10 and 11 appropriate to apply Ramsey in our case. Lord, the... I have nothing further to say, I think, in response to my learned friend who stayed close to his written case. And, Lord, I'd only say there is no inconvenience for the local authorities in trying to work out, any more than any other anti-avoidance situation, trying to work out whether or not a case should be inquired into. As we can see, my lord, at electronic file page 390, where there is correspondence which attains to this case between the local authority who did not know what was going on and wanted to know what was going on and was sent the lease. And then after that, had to make further inquiries to find out what the actual situation was. So they have to, in cases of avoidance, in cases where they think there may be something that needs to be inquired into, obviously to go to greater trouble than they would do with others. So that isn't a problem for reading the statute in any other way than we have yet. Lord, that concludes my submissions in reply. Lord, as regards press, my lord, go to my learned friend's case and would just generally say this. I mean, the appellant's case is that on the facts as asserted or assumed, they fall in our submission squarely within Lord's assumptions evasion of principle. And, Lord, that, of course, is well rehearsed in the written case. But we do go on from that and say, of course, there is an existing liability. And, Lord, I suppose in that respect, I should address, I did not this morning, at electronic file page 444, section 65, 65-2 of the 1988 Act. And, Lord, great weight was put on that in submissions of my learned friend and by the learned judge. Lord, if I could just get it up. Oh, sorry, 45-2, but I said 65-2, I do apologise. Lord, in 45-2, it says, of course, in such a case, the rate pair shall be liable for an amount calculated by finding the chargeable amount for each chargeable day and aggregating the amounts found under paragraph A above, which sets the charge. And nothing more, surely, my lord, could demonstrate that that is a computational subsection rather than one which, for the chargeable financial year, rather than one which is setting a new charge for a new day. And all that happens is that if you are within the scope of the statute on one day, then that is added to the next day when the next day comes up. And my learned friend is that a new existing, sorry, that a new liability arises each day is not strictly correct, because what is happening is that the existing liability is merely being augmented. And, Lord, the fact is that the bills and so on, as we've seen, are issued for a chargeable financial year and the amount of the liability, the aggregation of dates within each chargeable financial year, yes, Lord?
You take us to section 45-2, which is, say, the calculation section. But section 45-1, which is the liability section, is explicit, isn't it, that the liability is one in respect of any particular day in the year?
Yes, it is, my lord, but the way the charge is drafted, my lord, is... The way the charge is drafted is a person, the rate pair, shall, as regards her editment, is subject to a non-domestic rate in respect of the chargeable financial year if the following conditions are satisfied. Yeah? The charge is set in respect of the day by the aggregation of the days. And 45-2 is the liability section, charge is set in 45-1. So the charges for each financial year and indeed the demands are issued for, as your lordship can see at the back of the case, for each financial year.
So on your approach, would the scheme work if they created the lease on the last day of one financial year and then ran over into the next financial year? For all but the first day, would it then work for day two onwards? It all critically depends, does it, on where the financial year happens to fall?
No, my lord, because one financial year falls seamlessly into the next. So it's not going to, if they comply with the conditions on the first day of the next financial year, then they have a charge for that financial year. The, in any event, Lord, the assumptions evasion principle is directed towards the fact that there is an existing liability at that point. And I suppose, my lord, you may say that the evasion principle can't work on day one. If that is what your lordship was saying, I would say no, because the liability arises one minute after midnight or at midnight of the new chargeable financial year. If that is the way that it was trying to be avoided. And in any event, my lord, I mean, one compares it with other taxes where, of course, there's an aggregation in a year of assessment of bringing purposes of profits made on one day or the next day. There's no difficulty about that within a trading period or a charging period. And this is setting that down in statute. It really isn't any different. Once understood that it's there, the SPVs, the existing liability must be, the NDR, it's not as if it was impressed where the existing liability didn't exist, that is, the duty towards his wife didn't exist at the time that the properties were put into the company. And it's difficult to think of a situation where an existing liability sought to be evaded, such as the way in which my learned friend puts it in his example, when there are a myriad of ways in which a company can be attacked if somebody alienates their assets, if an individual alienates their assets to a company or company alienates assets to a company in order to evade or frustrate, for instance, the liability to income tax. And this is a situation where the incorporation and the winding up or dissolution of the company is each occasion deliberately created in order to neutralize the NDR liability. And the computational process for the NDR liability can't possibly be something which is of significance in that form of treatment. Lord, the way in which my learned friend puts the case at paragraph 61 or electronic file page 150 is that this is an attempt to try and shift the tax burden onto somebody who should not, onto some person who should not be taxed. But if we are correct in the application in our written case of Prest and in our submissions, the NDR liability becomes payable by the landlord or the controller of the companies as a consequence of the ineffectiveness of the scheme. So there's no question of trying to shift in an unconstitutional manner a liability onto another party. And that is the simple result in the failure of most tax avoidance schemes, that the person who ought to pay the amount has to pay it. And it's what Prest does, is it in this case identifies the person who is truly liable for the NDR liability. And obviously, as is said in my learned friend's case of paragraph 62 on page 150, the obligation must be found from taxing statute. And in this case, indeed it is. There's no other way in which it can be described. And that is all that is said in those cases like Attorney General Wilkshire Dairies. Local authorities are going to have power to do, or the person in question is going to have power to do this, to levy a tax. It's got to be an explicit power, of course it has. We perfectly accept that. And the court is perfectly entitled to set aside or disregard, set aside transactions which may have tax consequences for persons to whom, who should properly have that liability. And there is no legislative gap, my learned friend suggests, at paragraph 64, page 151. Far from it. The answer is that the SPVs are disregarded and the controller is identified as truly having the liability. And I've dealt with his example, paragraph 65. Lord, paragraph 67, my learned friend suggests that the... The avoidance of direct respondents and not submitting for adoption has no application in the field of taxation. Well, that, of course, is entirely correct, but I don't think his example, my lord, in my submission takes it, in our submission, takes it really any further. Lord, the next point which is made is to say that we have misunderstood Lord's assumptions criteria, that's at paragraph 71 of his case. And, Lord...
Mr. Matthew, Lord Leggett has a question for you.
I'm sorry, my lord, I apologize.
The difficulty I have with this whole line of argument, Mr. Matthew, I'd just like you to address, if you could, is that it surely has nothing objectionable in itself about the use of a corporate personality in this case. This isn't a case where it's objectionable that a company is the owner rather than its shareholders are being made the owner of the property. It's only when you introduce the further factor of dissolution or winding up that it becomes objectionable. But that isn't a misuse or an abuse of corporate personality. That might be an abuse of winding up or attempt to get around the legislation which the Ramsey argument applies. But this isn't a case where the use of a company is evading a liability. You need further additions before you get to that. And so I don't see how the piercing the corporate veil argument is really applicable at all in this case.
Because the company is deliberately imposed, my lord, to establish the evasion, because individuals could not be imposed without serious consequences if they behave like the companies behave. And the prospect, the point of limited liability, if I may put it in more general terms, my lord, the point of limited liability is to provide a privilege that individuals don't have against liability. And it is that privilege against liability which is being abused. And it is then connected with abuse of the insolvency legislation by putting a company which has no bona fide business or will prospect of any bona fide business immediately into a dissolution, alternatively allowing it to be struck off, so that in some mysterious way, the NDR liability evaporates. Lord, that cannot be a proper use of the company legislation. It's the introduction of the company as the vehicle to evade or avoid the liability and to frustrate its enforcement. And it's the frustration of the enforcement which so far has proved so successful, because there's no other way it could be done except by this action on a statutory scheme, that of liberty liability, which Parliament introduced for the purpose of enabling bona fide business to carry out its activities, not for the purposes which it's been used for in this case. My learned friend, file page 152, paragraph 71 of his case, suggests that there's a three-part principle to the evasion, a three-part nature to the evasion principle. Which in our submission is entirely wrong, the principle, there's no three-stage process, my lord, ad hoc, my lord, assumption or any other of the justices about the evasion principle. The evasion principle was, with the exception of Lord Walker, accepted as being a proper principle. And it's not to be divided up as if it is a statutory system or analysis, rather, I should say. Lord, the fact is, is that the impressed, the companies had the properties before the liability arose. And you don't, that, the fact that the companies are interposed in order to accept the liability in effect and to frustrate it is a single action. And, Lord, I really don't think that that submission can be taken much, much further. The... The next thing my learned friend looks to is that the... I think, my lord, paragraph 76, where he says that the liability, as he has done and submitted to your lordships, arises as a day-to-day liability and nothing more and nothing less. Well, your lordship has our submissions on that and that it is an existing liability. And that is what Prest principle anyway is all about. Lord, and I think we want, he repeats that it is a day-to-day liability and your lordship has our submissions on that point. Also, I would, so far, my lord, as the development of the doctrine goes, my lord, we... There are a number of cases in the, well, obviously, we have Farah and British Airways. And at electronic file 1479, my lord, Lord Wolf addresses what...
Mr. Matthew, I wonder, you and I are the only people unmuted and it's not my phone ringing.
We haven't got a phone ringing here, my lord, I don't know where it is.
Well, it's gone now, anyway.
I'm sorry.
It's my phone and I've disposed of it.
Ah, right.
Lord, at paragraph 55 in Farah, which is at page 1479 of the electronic bundle, Lord Wolf addressed the development... The developing, our developing principle ought to be addressed. And he said, if those who do not have the appropriate documentation can be prevented or deterred from applying for this country, then that makes the immigration act, like you said, one easier. In my judgment, the fact that there is in this interest between the Home Office, the carrier, and the would-be immigrant, coupled with the fact that any advice given would obviously have a direct effect on the immigrants concerned, is part of the reason why the facts in this case should be investigated before a conclusion is reached as to whether a duty of care exists or not. This is an area of developing jurisprudence. Whether that is so, the question whether or not an analogous situation should be recognized, sorry, an analogous situation should be recognized as giving rise to a duty of care should be determined when the facts have been established. And of course, that is what we say is applicable in this case. And similarly, Lord, at... Lord Justice Chagwick said at paragraph 2, I just try and magnify it. He starts, as Lord Brown Wilkerson observed in Barrett and Islington, unless it is possible to give certain affirmative answer to the question whether a claim would be bound to fail, the answer is not one which it is appropriate to strike out a claim in advance of trial. Lord Brown Wilkerson went on to point out that an area of law which was uncertain and developed, it could not normally be appropriate to strike out. He emphasized the importance of the principle that the development of the law should be on the basis of actual facts of the trial, final of the trial, and not be on the basis of hypothetical facts assumed, possibly wrongly to be true, on the hearing of the application to strike out. Then he gets on about the operations that like affect in the Bedford County Council case and the Dorset County Council case. Then he gets on about observations of the like effect in the Bedford County Council case and the Dorset County Council case. Lord, the 43, paragraphs 43, 46, and 47, he elucidates that further. And, Lord Dunham, the, at file page in Barrett and Endfield Council, at page 1265, Lord Brian Wilkinson, similarly, as we've seen, makes these obligations at page 557. Electronic file page 1265. The letter F under striking out in my speech in the Bedfordshire case, with which other members of the House agreed, I pointed out, unless it was possible to give a certain answer to the question whether the plaintiff's claim would succeed, the case was inappropriate for striking out. I further said that an area of law which is uncertain and developing such as the circumstances in which a person can be held liable in negligence for the exercise of statutory duty or power, it is not normally appropriate to strike out. In my judgment, creative thoughts that such a development should be on the basis of actual facts found at the trial and not hypothetical facts assumed, possibly wrongly, to be true in terms of the strike out. I don't in addition to what we've said in our written case, deals with the developing area part, may then revert to our case generally and say, and submit, Lord, that the evasion principle is, on the assumed facts of these cases, satisfied. The section 45 subsection two liability is to elevate the computational system over and above the statutory structure of charge. And, Lord, as I've submitted, there is an existing liability. And the reasoning of Lord Justice David Richards represented a narrowing of the doctrine, as we said in our written case, to a degree which cannot be attended by the justice in the pressed case. And the fact is, is that the manner in which this was gone about was to frustrate the collection of it. But the manner which it was going about was to use the imposition of the companies because of the natural fragility under human control of the companies, which of itself was enough to mean that the liability, the tax couldn't be collected. Lord, I don't know whether I can assist you. I'm a Lord Dunham. I suppose one would say that, alternatively, the evasion principle is not, as a matter of authority, confined swiftly to paragraph 35, which of Lord Assumption's judgment. I mean, even if the NDR, in this case, is not found by our lordships to be an existing liability, it would still be open, Lord, to a trial court to hold that these cases fall within the evasion principle as judicially or to be judicially developed. And, Lord Dunham, the question, of course, right, this is not really whether the leases are valid or whether the corporate veil can be pierced, whether it is right to strike out those points without disclosure and evidence in a case such as this. The case may well turn on further inquiry as a result of disclosure. And it may well be, Lord, that in this case, that some kind of, some amendment may be necessary to take account of what comes about. And the fact is, as the documents demonstrate in case from the local authority, how difficult it is for them to acquire the information, the evidence necessary for the bringing of these proceedings. Lord, I don't know whether I can assist your lordship further on the press point, in addition to those points which it made in our
Thank you very much, Mr. Matthew. There don't appear to be any questions for you at the moment. So in that case, I'll ask Mr. Prosser to reply.
Thank you. So my submissions on the piercing the corporate veil argument are set out at paragraphs 51 to 88 of my written case. That's Electronic File pages 148 to 156. Those submissions are made on an assumption, the assumption being that the court has rejected the appellant's Ramsey argument. That is, that your lordships agree with the respondents, that broadly, if there is a valid subsisting lease of a hereditarian, then it's the lessee who's the owner, as defined by section 65.1, even where the lease was granted for tax avoidance purposes only. If your lordships don't agree with that, then obviously the appellant's win anyway. We don't have to consider this argument. So I'm only considering this argument on that assumption. And the assumption includes that your lordships agree that in circumstances where the lessee is a company, the mere fact that there is a controller of that company is irrelevant. That person cannot be regarded as the owner under section 65, just because they are the controller of the lessee. There's nothing in part three of the Act, in other words, which authorizes, part three of the Act itself, which authorizes a piercing of the corporate veil, so as to impose a liability on the controller. Of course, one has different sorts of legislation which can look through a company to the controller for certain purposes. But the assumption behind my submissions is that your lordships agree, as a result of consideration of the Ramsey principle, that there's nothing in part three itself which authorizes such a piercing of the corporate veil. Now, could I just point out and apologize for a typographical error in my written case at paragraph 52, which is on Electronic File page 148? There are some words missing and it may be therefore that the paragraph doesn't make sense. If one looks at the penultimate line beginning so as to regard, it should read, so as to regard the controller as the owner. So the words missing after regard, the controller as. So on the basis of those, that assumption, my first submission is one which was not considered by the Court of Appeal below. And obviously, I'm supporting the reasons why the Court of Appeal held that the piercing the corporate veil argument was bound to fail. And I'm supporting those and I'll come on to them. But I want to start with what I would submit is a logically prior question concerning the fundamental nature, not the scope, but the fundamental nature of this doctrine of piercing the corporate veil. And I submit it's clear from the pressed case that where the court does pierce the corporate veil, it is exercising a non-statutory power, what was called in that case a judicial tool. And it's doing so in favor of a party in order to give a remedy to that in the form of relief against the controller of the company in circumstances where all other conventional remedies are not available. The exercise of that power being justified by, as Lord Sumption put it, a public policy imperative. Now, I submit that's an accurate summary of what the various justices in press said about the nature of the doctrine. I set them out, I set out what they said, all except for Lord Walker, who saw a different view of the doctrine, really said it wasn't a doctrine at all, it was a label for various circumstances in which other principles operate. But apart from Lord Walker, all of the justices either themselves address or agree with other justices who address the nature of the doctrine, and they all talk about it in similar terms, in terms of a power, a tool, in order to give a remedy and so on and so forth. I set them out at paragraphs 54 to 59 of my written case. That's at Electronic File pages 148 to 150. I'm very happy to go through those paragraphs of pressed. But could I assume that your lordships can see what I've written and contest yourselves whether or not their accurate statements of what they say? And go on from there?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So I'm proceeding on the basis that I have accurately summarized the nature, the fundamental nature of the doctrine. If I have done so, then I would submit that the doctrine can have no possible application to part three of the 1980s Act, so as to impose a liability to NDR on the respondents as controllers of the various SPVs. In other words, in circumstances where properly construed, part three of the Act does not impose liability on a controller, and that's the assumption I'm making as a result of the Ramsey discussion, the court has no constitutional authority to grant a remedy in favor of the rating authority in order to produce the result that liability to NDR is imposed on the controller after. Now, of course, in pressed itself, the court was considering whether the power, the doctrine was applicable, the power was exercisable, even though, as Lord Sumption and Lady Hale made clear, the 1973 Matrimonial Causes Act did not specifically authorize it. They were asking themselves, in what circumstances is this doctrine applicable, even though the Act does not specifically authorize it? But I submit that part three of the 1988 Act is fundamentally different from the 1973 Act, simply because it is a taxing statute. And as a matter of constitutional authority, policy, authority to charge tax must be found, if found at all, in the relevant taxing statute itself. And there are lots of examples one could give. I give in my written case the example of McCarthy and Stone, which was to do with a local authority, Richmond Borough Council, which was seeking to charge developers who were making inquiries. And the House of Lords held that they had no authority to do so because the statute did not expressly or impliedly authorize it. And Lord Lowry referred to the well-known Attorney General Wilkes United Dares. And I don't need to, I hope, set out, take me to that case or set out what was said in Wilkes United Dares about the need, in the case of a revenue statute, to find that the statute itself expressly or impliedly authorizes the collection or charge of tax or of other revenue. I refer in my written case, I call it high constitutional authority, sorry, high constitutional policy. And that comes from what Lord Roger said in a case called O'Brien and Independent Assessor. But whether one calls it high constitutional authority or just constitution policy, it is a matter of constitutional policy as a result of the Bill of Rights Act. And therefore, one does need to see something in the 1988 Act, part three, which authorizes one to pierce the corporate veil. Now, I would also submit, as I do in my written case, that it would be no answer to this point to say, well, courts often exercise non-statutory powers, for example, the power to order rescission of a contract or rectification or something along those lines, a consequence of which is that one party who hitherto was not liable to tax becomes liable to tax. That is certainly true, but the point there in my submission is that that sort of power is not analogous to the power to pierce the corporate veil, because there, the power is not being exercised to impose a tax liability. It's being imposed in order to determine, for example, the party's respective property rights. And it's a mere consequence of determining those rights that one party rather than another is liable to tax. But in this case, the whole point of the piercing the veil doctrine being applied is in order to impose a tax charge upon the respondents. That is what the appellant's are inviting the court to do. It's not a mere consequence of altering, determining the property rights. It's saying, you must impose a tax liability by piercing the corporate veil. And if one applies that submission here, given that, as mentioned already, part three does not provide for the controller to be regarded as the owner under section 65, my submission is the court has no power to fill what I did call a perceived legislative gap by piercing the corporate veil. Now, I'm not suggesting that the doctrine has no part to play in tax, the tax field generally. I give an example in my written case. If you have a taxpayer who is, ex hypothecia, liable to tax and who seeks to frustrate the enforcement of that liability by taking steps involving the interposition of a company, putting assets into a company, then, sorry.
I was anticipating what you were going to say, I'm sorry, it's the invisible Lord Briggs. In a case like that, surely, as Lord Walker would say, there were plenty of other powers available to bring the wicked transferor of his property to book than lifting the corporate veil.
Yes, that may be so, absolutely. And of course, the lifting or piercing the corporate veil is regarded as a remedy or a tool of last resort. And it may be that one doesn't need it in this case. Perhaps a better example would be to do with seeking, if the revenue are trying to get information from an individual taxpayer, and the taxpayer says, well, I don't have the information, my company has it. And he's put the information into the hands of the company in order to frustrate the application of the revenue enforcement information powers, then possibly that would be an example. The point I want to make, however, is I don't need to prove that there are cases where the doctrine does apply in the taxation field. All I'm saying is my submission is limited to this sort of case, where the attempt is being made to impose a tax charge and collect tax by way of application of this doctrine. So that is my submission, which did not, was not discussed by the Court of Appeal. And your lordships may say, well, we don't nearly need to consider that point because let's go on to consider what was discussed by the Court of Appeal. And that's my second submission, which is the scope rather than the nature of the doctrine. How far does the doctrine go, in other words? And I set that out, I summarized what was said in pressed at paragraph 67 to 69 of my written case. That's Electronic File pages 151 to 152. And I think here, because Mr. Matthew has referred to what Lord Sumption said in pressed and has said he doesn't accept and has said he doesn't accept my submission, that the evasion principle has three elements to it, I think I do need to take you to a couple of paragraphs of pressed, if I may. So, if I could go first of all to paragraph twenty-eight, electronic file page seven nine five. This is paragraph twenty-eight of Lord Sumption, and in the middle of paragraph twenty-eight, opposite E, there's a sentence beginning, the evasion, the evasion principle is different. And then he says, it is, in other words, he's now describing the evasion principle, that the court may disregard the corporate veil if there is a legal right against the person in control of it, which exists independently of the company's involvement, and a company is imposed so that the separate legal personality of the company will defeat the right or frustrate its enforcement. Now, I summarise that in my written case, I've divided it into three elements, the first is that there's a legal right, which, the second is, it exists independently of the company's involvement, and the third is, that the company is imposed so that, in other words, with the purpose of frustrating, defeating the right or frustrating its enforcement. The same thing comes at paragraph thirty-five. If I could take you to paragraph thirty-five of Lord Sumption on electronic page seven nine nine. He says, I conclude that there is a limited principle of English law, which applies when a person is under an existing legal obligation or liability, or subject to an existing legal restriction, which he deliberately evades, or whose enforcement he deliberately frustrates by interposing a company under his control. Now, those same elements that I've described in relation to paragraph twenty-eight are there in thirty-five, it's just that he's now talking about it in terms of an obligation rather than the correlative, the claimant's rights, so he's talking about the defendant's position, he's under an obligation, but twenty-eight he was talking about the claimant having the right, but it's the same elements, you've got to find an existing right or obligation, which exists independently of the company, so that the defendant, if I can call it in that, is under an obligation, you've identified that obligation, and then you find that the defendant, with the purpose of seeking to defeat that right or frustrate its enforcement, defeat the obligation and so on, interposes the... Those are the essential elements of the evasion principle in my submission. Now, I think that all of the justices in pressed, except Lord Walker, who didn't really discuss it, accepted that there is such a principle, the only disagreement was whether the doctrine may go further than that, Lord Sumption thought it didn't, Lord Newberger agreed with Lord Sumption. That's at paragraph eighty-one, at electronic file page eight one four, he said the doctrine should only be invoked in those circumstances. Lady Hale, with whom Lord Wilson agreed, at paragraph ninety-two, that's electronic page eight one seven, said she wasn't sure whether it was possible to classify all of the cases in which the court have been or should be prepared to disregard the separate legal personality of a company neatly into cases of either concealment or evasion. Concealment is where one finds that the company is an agent or trustee, or something like that anyway, and that that fact is being concealed, we're not interested in that, so that she says it's not clear that all cases can be either concealment or evasion. Lord Manson, at paragraph a hundred, that's file page eight one eight, said he wouldn't want to foreclose all possible future situations which might arise, but that, he said, if there are other situations in which piercing the veil may be relevant, they're likely to be novel and very rare, I'll come back to that point. And he goes on at paragraph hundred and two, on the same electronic file page, he said that no one should be encouraged to think that any further exception, in addition to the evasion principle, will be easy to establish if it exists at all. So, he's saying it may not be limited to that, but he's putting down a marker that it'll only be a very rare case where one would extend it. Then Lord Clark, at paragraph hundred and three, electronic page eight one nine, agreed with Lord Manson on that point. So, one's certainly got four justices, Lord Sumption, Newberger, Manson, Clark, who either say it's limited to the evasion principle, or you're going to find it very difficult to extend it, it's going to be a novel and very rare case. And the question for your lordships is whether you're going to say a novel and very rare case includes a case of tax avoidance, where there's no evasion at all, there's no existing liability at all, it's simply that someone has taken steps to avoid a future, maybe continuing a further liability, that's the question, is that the very rare case, or would it be astonishing to say that the principle extends that far? Most recently, or more recently, in two thousand and seventeen, in the Persad and Singh case, a Privy Council case, which is at tab fifty-five of the authorities, electronic page one eight nine nine, that was, as I say, a Privy Council case, but Lord Reed and Lord Hodge were members of that court, in addition to Lords Newberger, Carr and Hughes. Lord Newberger, at paragraph seventeen, electronic page one nine oh three, again agreed with Lord Sumption, that piercing the corporate veil could be justified only where, and then he quotes what Lord Sumption said in the paragraph thirty-five of pressed, in other words, where the evasion principle applies. And he said, Mr Singh cannot get near establishing any evasive or frustrating action part of Mr Persad, because Mr Persad was under no relevant legal obligation or liability to Mr Singh at the relevant time when he proffered the draft lease or the lease to pay in kind. So, that was why, in that case, it was thought that the principle simply had no application. So, if one looks first of all at the evasion principle, and then we'll come on to consider a possible development of the evasion principle, I've referred to those essential ingredients of the principle, pre-existing liability on the part of the defendant, existing independently of the company's involvement, and then the company being interposed deliberately to defeat that liability or frustrate its enforcement. Now, in my submission, it's absolutely clear what's meant by pre-existing liability, it does not mean the sort of liability which the defendant is seeking to defeat in the sense of a future liability, pre-existing means what it says. So that it would be quite wrong to muddle up the requirement of an existing liability on the one hand, and the separate and additional requirement of taking steps to avoid a liability, a future liability, on the other, but that's exactly what the appellants do here. They say there are just two ways of describing the same thing, but this is at paragraphs eighty-two to eighty-seven of their written case, file pages one one seven to one one eight, if I can quote paragraph eighty-seven, they say, the qualifying term, existing liability or obligation, is therefore simply another way of framing the requirement that a company is interposed in order to evade or frustrate the enforcement of a liability or obligation. Well, it's true that if you, if you understand the meaning of evade a liability, then clearly you're talking about an existing liability, but if as the appellants want to do, they regard the purpose requirement as including a purpose of avoiding a future liability, or an additional or further liability, a liability of a greater amount, then that is not the sort of existing liability which Lord Sumption is referring to. Similarly, the appellants at paragraphs one hundred and ten, sorry, paragraph one hundred and one, I think it is, let me check if I've got that one. I think it's, sorry, it's one hundred and ten of their written case, electronic file page one two nine. They say the evasion principle is satisfied on the assumed facts of these cases, the respondents interposed companies under their control solely in order to avoid NDR liability that would, but for the company's separate legal personality, be a liability of the respondents. Once that is accepted, there is no need to inquire separately whether the liability was an existing liability, so that sums it up, that's their case, this is a case where the respondent sought to avoid NDR by granting leases to the SPVs, and you don't need to inquire further into the question of existing liability. That must be wrong, that is not what Lord Sumption was saying, he wouldn't have called it the evasion principle, he wouldn't have been distinguishing, as he does, between what's covered by the evasion principle, and on the other hand, taking steps to ensure that the company, and not the controller, incurs the liability in the first place. Yes?
If it simply, if it simply meant that using a company to prevent you as an individual being liable, then it would apply every time a company was used, wouldn't it?
Yes.
It's always the case that if the person had not used the company, but had just undertaken the obligation themselves, they would be liable, but they're not because the company is used instead.
Well, what, if I've understood your lordship's point correctly, I think Mr Matthew would respond to that, well, there are some types of using a company which are okay, and other types which are not, and he regards the way in which we've used a company as objectionable, whereas not all uses of company would be so, and therefore it would be for the court to express a moral view about the conduct in question, and decide whether the evasion principle or some development of it should apply. And my submission, that is not the right thing to do, this is not, this principle is not, or any development of it, is not about the expression of the moral view, it's about a case where there is a fraud or other wrongdoing that comes through pressed, all the way through the judgements, namely, an existing liability which is being sought to be evaded, not avoidance at all, avoidance has got nothing to do with the principle. And as my Lord, Lord Leggatt pointed out to Mr Matthew when he was speaking, the appellants say, well, there was an existing liability here, because of course, on day one of the chargeable financial year, the appellants, the respondents were entitled to possession, they were the owners, they granted the leases on day two, therefore there was an existing liability, but that, first of all, that's wrong, because the sort of liability which we're interested in is the amount which the appellants are claiming from us, not that the amount which we've coughed up, as it were, for day one, they're asking for more NDR for the period covered by the leases, we're not, that isn't an existing liability, that is a hypothetical liability that would have existed if we hadn't granted the leases. But the other point is, can it really be that this doctrine turns upon how clever you are in terms of which day of the year you decide to grant the leases, that if the respondents have been really clever and had granted the leases before they had ever come into a right to possession themselves, that everyone would have been happy, whereas because they only thought of this wonderful scheme after they'd had an entitlement possession, indeed, they didn't wait until the end of the financial year to set the ball rolling, as it were, that it's all different, it can't depend on a happenstance like that, which is on what day you grant the lease, or how clever you are as a landowner, my submission, that is not what this principle is about at all. So, first of all, there must be an existing liability which is different from the purpose of trying to do something through the use of a company, one's got to identify an existing liability. And the second point is that the liability referred to, which you're seeking to evade or frustrate, is the very same liability that you're under, it's not some further liability of the same kind, so just because we had, we accept an existing NDR liability for the period before the leases were granted, it's neither here nor there. The whole concept of evasion, which Lord Sumption talks about, and his distinction between evading a liability on the one hand, and causing a liability to be incurred by the company in the first place, would make no sense if what the appellants say is right. In point of fact, the claims in this case cover financial years after that in which the leases were granted, so although the appellants rely on this chargeable financial year point, their case actually doesn't depend on that, their case is that these leases aren't effective because you've pierced the corporate veil, or for financial years after as well, so that their, their arguments aren't actually, don't hang together in any event in my submission. So, it's clear, I would submit, that the evasion principle simply, it has no possible application, there is no evasion here, so the only question is whether a principled development of the evasion principle might occur such that it would be wrong to strike out the appellant's claim. And I discussed this at paragraphs eighty-three to eighty-eight of my written case, that's electronic file page one five five to one five six. And I submit there's no possibility of any development to cover this sort of case, and that's simply because there's no possibility of extending the evasion principle to cover avoidance. That would constitute a rejection of the basic position that you're piercing the veil in order to prevent evasion or other wrongdoing. The court will be holding that the only sort of wrongdoing that is required is lawful tax avoidance. But as I've said, to reach that conclusion, you'd have to say that the avoidance is morally wrong. That sort of moral judgement has repudiated time and time again by the courts, in other words, the reason why tax avoidance doesn't work, if it doesn't work, is not because it's morally wrong, it's because the statute, properly construed, doesn't give the result that the tax avoider wants. So, in a case that I refer to, a case called O'Neill I R C, it's at tab fifty-four of the authorities, it's electronic file page one eight eight six, at paragraph nine, that's file page one eight nine one. A court, Privy Council, a court consisting of Lords Nichols, Stane, Hoffman, Billett and Dame Elias, Lord Hoffman said, their lordships doubted the wisdom of using the concept of impropriety, because this suggests a moral judgement which their lordships think is inappropriate, and has been consistently repudiated in cases on tax avoidance schemes in England and New Zealand, that being a New Zealand case. So that, that's why in my submission, this principle or doctrine cannot be extended to cover this sort of case, because it cannot be extended to cover tax avoidance, it would enormously expand the scope of the doctrine, even though the clear majority of the justices in pressed considered that even if the doctrine isn't limited to the evasion principle, that it would be a very rare, novel case to which it would apply beyond the limits of that principle, but to say it goes beyond legal wrongdoing to some sort of perceived moral wrongdoing is not saying it's a very rare development, it's actually an enormous development.
While we've got this in front of, while we have this in front of us, paragraph ten has, perhaps has some relevance to the topic we were discussing this morning.
Yes, well, as far as that goes, I think Lord Reed himself in UBS made the same point, and that perhaps I could make the point by reference to what Lord Reed said in UBS.
I wasn't really wanting to take you off onto a new, you know, onto a new argument, it was simply while we had that in front of us, it struck me as relevant.
Yeah, I mean, but their Lord, it is Lord Hoffman is focusing on the statutory concept, he's focusing on the words used in the statute, and saying that those words can properly be used as referring to something in the real world, an economic or commercial concept, obviously, one doesn't got to reopen that debate about concepts being legal or commercial and so on, but nevertheless, that's the general idea, but he is focusing on the words, and likewise, in the UBS case at paragraph sixty-eight, Lord Reed... Lord Reed said, "The point is that the facts must be analyzed in the light of the statutory provision being applied." By the statutory provision being applied, Lord Reed meant the particular statutory language. That doesn't mean one is giving the language a literal interpretation. But the statutory concept can only be derived from the language of the statute. And therefore, one's got to fasten on the words and say, what do they mean? One might give them a broad commercial meaning, but it's still giving those words a meaning. And that's my objection to the approach of saying, well, let's just say that all transactions done for NDR avoidance purposes are ineffective. That isn't looking at the statute or any provision of the statute at all. Now, the final point that I wanted to make, coming back to Prest, or perhaps more generally, is in relation to Prest, is a paragraph hundred of their written case. That's file page one two three. The appellants say that the continued application of this doctrine of piercing the corporate veil is to guard against abuses of precisely this kind, in other words, the kind before you. And I say that's an assertion which has nothing supported in Prest or any other case. And I refer once more to the guard provisions. The guard is there to deal with, you might say, abuses, that is, avoidance, which might say goes too far. But as I said before the short adjournment, NDR is not within the guard. And it's not, again, therefore, for the court to expressing a moral judgment to try and reach the same result as the guard does. And then my final point, which I think covers both Ramsey and Prest, is to do with the appropriateness or otherwise of striking out this claim at this stage. And Mr. Matthew says, he refers to various cases which say, well, you've got to be quite cautious about that because who knows what might be thrown up, as it were, in the course of the trial? What he hasn't actually done is to suggest anything that might be thrown up in this case. We, we've got all the assumed facts. What other facts might come out? And it's no good for him to say, well, it might cause an amendment to the pleadings. You know, he might say, well, it turns out this case releases a sham after all, but that's been struck out. You've got to determine surely the question of striking out by reference to the pleadings. And by reference to the pleadings, there are no conceivable facts which could make a difference to the question, does the evasion principle apply? Or could a development of it possibly arrive, which would apply to this case? This case is all about avoidance, not about invasion, not about an existing liability. There's no fact which could possibly make a difference to the question, does this principle extend to avoidance? Those are my submissions on the Prest argument.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Prosser. Well, Mr. Matthew, you now have an opportunity to, to close your submissions.
Lord, Lord Dunn. The if I may, Lord, take to, to, on the high constitutional point about tax law. If I may take the lordship to what Lord Justice David Richards said at paragraph twenty eight of his judgment, which is found at page four oh one of the electronic file. Lord, that's paragraph twenty eight. This is lordship. This lordship said this. "The essential feature of the local authority's case that the corporate veil, the SPVs, should be pierced, as pleaded in paragraph for, for the Wigan Borough Council's particular claim, that the SPVs were interposed for the purpose and only the purpose of avoiding an existing and imminent charge to end in DR. The use of the SPVs was thus an act of impropriety with a view to avoiding potential immediate legal obligation or liability, evading the law, frustrating the enforcement of the relevant legal obligation." Beaten paragraph twenty, that the effect of piercing the corporate veil of SPVs would be to treat the leases as beneficial property of the defendants. That would be to treat the SPVs as agents of the defendants, which is not the way in which the case is being presented. I'm inclined to think that if the corporate veil of the SPVs is pierced, their separate legal personality would be disregarded and the leases treated as granted by the defendants to themselves, therefore of no effect at all. In any event, the result would be that the defendants were at all material times the owner as defined of the relevant purpose. Lord, that is to deal, to address the point made by my learned friend. The effect, that is the consequence, as I put it to you, Lord, in my submission on Prest. Lord Dunn. The the other points made by my friend that, in answer to my, Lord Leggett, that this was no better than really putting a, a liability into a company as if, because the liability was newly, newly, sorry, was not putting a liability into the company, but mainly that the company assumed a liability once it had been in. Lord Dunn, that, of course, on our submission, is not so. I mean, on the facts, the companies which had no resources to meet these liabilities at all were created and carried through in order to render the, to neutralize the collection of NDR. There was absolutely no other purpose in them. And, Lord, whatever happened, the NDR could not be collected. Whether or not it was incurred, it still could not be collected. That's what it was about. And that is what was behind the evasion principle in Lord Sumption's paragraph thirty five. And that is exactly what the evasion principle is about. And that is why he emphasized time and again as a lordship, that the fact is that the liability to the wife in Prest arose a long time after the properties had been invested in the companies, same in Persad and so on. So the, the point is that these companies were incorporated solely for that purpose. And that is because it was a liability which they saw rising from one chargeable financial year to the next. And nothing more, nothing less. If, of course, so on.
I, I do have a problem, Matthew, about the relationship between the landlords and the controllers and whether they're necessarily one all the same. The landlords, the previous owners, or the, the initial owners, they are a series of companies, as I understand it.
Yes, Lord.
And they're not necessarily, are they, the controllers, those companies of the of, of, of the SPV?
Well, it has not been.
There might be some other individuals.
Sorry, my lord, it has not been accepted that the landlords were the controllers, albeit indirectly of the companies.
Well, all right. I suppose it is accepted in this case, but will the scheme be perfectly all right then in your, in your argument? As long as we can be shown that the controllers are not the the exact one and the same entities as were the original owners. Will, will there be no objection in that case, apart from the Ramsey one?
No, Lord, there wouldn't be an objection because what they would be doing would be, for some reason or another, no doubt nefarious, they would be accepting the liability to NDR when they had absolutely no resources and no intention of paying it. And that probably amounts nothing less than a criminal behaviour. But, Lord, I don't think that's a situation which is contemplated in, in, in the argument. I mean, the, the, the fact is that they are the controllers on the assumed facts. Sorry, my lord. I think, I think Mr. Prosser wanted to say something, my lord.
I, I think he changed his mind, Mr. Matthew.
He changed his mind, right?
Well, he didn't change his mind. Mr. Matthew changed his mind because he said it was accepted as a fact, and I just wanted to make it clear it's accepted as an assumed fact.
Sorry, my lord, it is an assumed fact. I should have said that. But that is within the confines of this case. And I don't think your lordship's example is one which really comes within the sphere of, of the argument because it, it entails a lot of other different consequences, probably of a criminal nature. I mean, the companies can't be just incorporated to acquire liability. Who would do that and where does it come from? What they, what the control companies can do for liability, that's a different kettle of fish altogether. And I was anxious to reiterate, Lord, the risk of repeating myself on paragraph ninety five of our case to address some points which have been raised. Lord, paragraph ninety five is found at page one two one, my lord, of the electronic file. And there it says, "The facts were similar to Prest, where companies had owned the properties long before the liability arising out of the divorce proceedings came into existence. It would not be said that the companies were interposed deliberately in order to frustrate the collection and enforcement of NDR. The assumed facts of these claims are nothing like those in Prest. In these cases, the companies were interposed precisely to defeat the same liability which the court is concerned. And with how the position of the companies, that liability would have been bought by the respondent. That's assumed because there haven't been any other form of alienation." And, my lord, we then pose the point that this is not that different from Hall and Lippman and the recent case, Lord of Ahmedover, where Mr. Justice Hadden Cave found, as is cited in that paragraph. Lord Dunn, I reminded my, my junior lord that, of course, it's not the same in Lord Frank Wilkinson's speech was that it's not as if the same facts or some facts might come out. We have a situation towards the developing side argument, is the argument developing side of Prest, is that we have a situation here where the authorities, as is apparent from the, from the documentation, at this stage really know very little. And they will know is that the, 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 the liability hasn't been met and that the, the SPVs exist. And so it is a question of, of of that the future may provide a very different evidential basis to the one which is there at present. And, I mean, Lord Frank Wilson did go on and say that you shouldn't make inevitable that we have hypothetical facts in case of this. Even if they're assumed. Lord Dunn, that's the conclusion of my reply, my lord, on, on the Prest point. I don't know whether I can assist your lordships further.
It doesn't appear that we have any questions for you, Mr. Matthew. Well, we're most grateful to yourself and Mr. Prosser and to those who've assisted you for the submissions we've received. We'll now take time to consider your submissions and issue our judgment in due course. The court will now adjourn.